Sir Ross? Ross?
Here.
Gotcha, okay. Um, White?
Here.
Taylor? Robinson? Robinson?
Here.
I've got White. Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Harris? Ginn? Ginn?
I'm here.
I got you, Ron. Ginn?
Think she's lost her feed.
You guys unmute. Councilmember Ginn?
Diane's, uh, mic is muted.
Mine has, mine has to be muted in the council chambers, but you guys can still hear me. Can you hear me?
Couldn't hear. We can now. Can hear you now.
Okay, Ginn? Councilmember Ginn?
Here.
Thank you. Um, and Height?
Present.
Corum is present, sir?
Mr. Taylor, in.
Oh, okay, and Maurice, are you present? Councilmember Taylor, are you present? Councilmember Taylor? Guys? Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Thank you. The quorum is present.
Thank you very much. Um, we're gonna ask Councilmember Harris to lead us in prayer.
Let's all bow heads. We pray, Lord, that you will be with us tonight, Lord, as we, uh, as we, uh, conduct the city business, uh, of this fine city, Lord. We, Lord, we know that we're in some challenging times, and, and these challenging times, we, we ask for your guidance and leadership and to help us to make the right decisions, Lord, during this pandemic time that we're in. We pray, Lord, for our first responders and the risks that they take, uh, responding to, who all knows how many, uh, citizens that may be exposed to the virus. We pray, Lord, for their safety. We pray, Lord, for our electrical workers, Lord. It's a, it's a, it's a tough business, a dangerous business, Lord. We pray that you will be with us. We pray, Lord, for the police and fire and, and, as we said, in the city here, Lord, and we ask you, Lord, to guide us through tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. Um, communications, how about, um, minutes? Somebody wanna make motion to accept the minutes?
I move.
Second.
Motion and second. Ms. Whitby?
On the minutes, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor? Where is Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you. Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn? Ginn? Councilmember Ginn? Height? Height?
Yes.
Councilmember Ginn? I think that was a yes.
Yep, okay. Anybody wanna pull communication? We have, I'm showing three. Not, how about a motion?
I move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to accept the communications, one through three. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn? Ginn? Councilmember Ginn? Height?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Consent agenda, um, anybody wanna pull anything out of the consent agenda? Seeing none, um, how about a motion to accept a consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, all opposed, same sign? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much. Let's go into new business, Ms. Whitby.
Resolution 2073, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a First Amendment to lease with option to purchase with the North Little Rock Advertising and Promotion Commission for property located at 600 North Main Street.
So move. Second. And can we have an explanation?
Absolutely, you have an explanation. The, uh, as, it's very obvious, we have, uh, the Convention Visitors Bureau, uh, income is from restaurant and hotel, uh, receipts, and with the pandemic, needless to say, they're gonna take a pretty good hit. We're not sure exactly how hard, but we're gonna guess at least 75%. And, uh, they have built in a, uh, reserve that, uh, was very prudent that they did that, uh, but this, this pandemic has really put them behind. So in order to help them, uh, get through the rest of this year, uh, and we, they ask if we would not waive, but extend their lease so that the first payment, uh, which was due in April, will, will now be due in, uh, January of 2021. So I thought that was very reasonable. I think they've been prudent with their budget, and, um, uh, life goes on, and, and this, this pandemic is going to lessen, and our economy's gonna get going again, and I think 2021 will be a great year. So that was the reason that we brought this. Any questions or comments? Ms. Ross?
Do we have a motion?
Uh, so basically, it's just a nine-month delay is all it is, but they will pay in full.
Exactly. Exactly. Nine-month delay. All right, do we have a motion?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, on the motion.
On the motion, Ross?
I think, I think Charlie may have had a question.
No, I didn't have a question. I just, if we had a mic, my question was.
Yes.
White? I, I need to hear you say it.
Say it again, Beth.
Hey, you've, you've muted yourself. Can you unmute? Okay, now.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn? Councilmember Ginn, okay. And Height?
Yes.
R 2074, Mayor Smith.
Please call it, and then I'm gonna have a little presentation.
A resolution amending the 2016-2020 Consolidated, Consolidated Plan, the 2019 Annual Action Plan, and the Citizen Participation Plan of the City of North Little Rock in regard to inclusion of the Community Development Block Grant, Coronavirus, CDBG-CV Program Allocation and Project, and other provisions of the CARES Act.
Move for adoption.
Second.
And you've got our presentation.
Got it on the board. We got a mo- motion and a second. I'm gonna ask Robert Bertsch to come up. Um, Robert's been working with Melissa on the CDBG, uh, uh, program, and the, uh, what this amendment's all about is basically, if y'all recall, we set up a small business council. So, Mr. Bertsch, if you'll go ahead and tell us what's going on.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and, uh, uh, thank you to the council for taking the time to listen to this. Um, as you know, about three weeks ago, the mayor set up, uh, the opportunity for the Small Business Council to guide and direct, um, some of our small businesses in some funding options and, uh, some guidance on how to get back to work. Uh, we have put together a very diverse and, and very powerful council that has come up with a lot of great solutions, um, along with our assistance from the North Little Rock Chamber. Um, in that, uh, we came up with the, the parameters for the, uh, COVID-19 Small, uh, Small Business Economic Support Fund, um, which is going to be geared towards small businesses from 1 to 20 employees. It is, uh, gonna be designated for, uh, people that are licensed for business in the, in the city of North Little Rock. And, uh, we have actually gone above and beyond the state recommendation of a 15% allocation to minorities, women-owned businesses, and, and, uh, disabled veterans. We're actually doing 20%. So we're actually gonna hold 20% of that for those, those, uh, people in that area. Um, and, uh, we've gotten, as I emailed out to all the council members, uh, we've gotten, uh, a pretty good set of rules. Uh, a lot of it is, uh, developed by HUD, so those are ones we can't change. We did add in a few for the city just for, um, to make sure that we are taking care of our citizens. Um, and we are, uh, most likely gonna be going live with the application on Friday. And, uh, but we will post the, the, the rules and all tomorrow to our, uh, city page and our Facebook page.
So what you're saying is that we're gonna post the rules tomorrow, and then on Friday, uh, we will have it on our website that people can go and find out how, when, and where to apply?
Correct.
Any questions of Robert? Ms. Ross?
Uh, you said 1 to 20 employees. Now, are nonprofits included in this when you say businesses?
No, uh, according to HUD, that is one of the things that they, for this money, it is a HUD rule that nonprofits are not included.
Okay, so, and then my next question is, I know with the, you know, with the government, so many people in some of the previous, uh, money that's come out, you know, the money was gone before most people even have, we had a chance to apply. So how will we do this? Is it first come, first served, uh, when it goes live, uh, Friday, or how will that be handled?
Well, this is designed to, uh, go towards the people that have not been able to get any funding. So one of the scoring measures is no, no participation in any of the other programs. So if you've gotten PPP, or you've gotten the, uh, Arkansas State Grants, then those will not be, uh, required, not be taken at this time. We're gonna hold those applications, because if we do end up having anything left over, we may be able to address some of those, but this is definitely for people that have not gotten any kind of assistance whatsoever. Um, and it's gonna be scored in that manner. It's gonna be scored first by, um, the minority, women-owned businesses, and disabled veteran businesses, and then after that, we will, uh, we will look at the, um, whether they've had assistance yet or not.
And so the $406,000, I know that that includes some administration fee also, so, uh, basically, it's first come, first served with the, and do they have to be in business in North Little Rock for one year? Is that correct?
Two.
How many years?
Two.
Two years. Okay, so in business for two years. Okay, and then as far as the funding, I know that there was some discussion as how do you, you know, accountability. Will you release the funds all at one time, um, at the initial application?
Uh, the plan is, that I emailed out, is that we're going to, um, be able to disperse half of it, and then they can bring back the receipts that we need for HUD, and then we will disperse the second half. Um, that is, you know, that is a, a judgment that the council can make on that. That's a city, uh, requirement. So, um, you know, I will definitely take any advice from the council on that.
No, I, I, I still believe it's accountability and that, you know, that things work. Now, these funds can only go for rent, utilities, and one of this, and what is that, payroll?
Rent, utility, payroll, and there's one included, um, the, the purchase of PPE equipment, because that is, um, a strain on a lot of small businesses right now that are having to purchase some things that they've not had to use in the past, as far as masks, gloves, and, and some other of the smaller PPP items. But it's not for any ongoing projects. It's not for anything, expanding their business. It, this is a gap in, this is a gap policy, basically, to hopefully get them through the summer, um, and, uh, and once the economy gets back to work, you know, that they'll be able to, to survive on their own. Um, we've made the requirements, I think, very easy. I think we have made them very attainable as far as retaining the full-time positions. Um, and, um, I do definitely wanna commend Melissa Irvin for the work that she's done on this. She has, uh, you know, worked tirelessly on making sure that we're meeting the HUD requirements first and foremost, because that protects us as a city.
Ms. Robinson?
Robert, I heard you say the person or the business had to be in operation for two years. Is that a North Little Rock requirement or a HUD requirement?
That one is, uh, a North Little Rock requirement with the, uh, that was actually offered by HUD, and if you look at Little Rock's, they're doing the same thing, and most of the other small cities are doing the same thing, that are doing, that are rolling these funds out. Little Rock has, has put their applications out. They've actually closed their applications already, but, uh, they did a lot of the similar requirements that we're doing, uh, because you wanna have at least some, some history of the business there, and, uh, that was the, the HUD recommendation, uh, that they made to us. It was up to us, but that's what, what we decided to put forth for the draft for you to, uh, review.
Ms. Ross?
So you will check with, uh, Ms. Whitby's office then, so they should have had a business license for two years then? So that, is that the way that you'll check that?
I've already gotten the list.
Any other questions? On the motion.
Oh, Mayor?
Hold it.
You need to convene a public hearing on this.
Absolutely, sorry. Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on R 2074 CDBG? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn? Councilmember Ginn, okay. And Height?
Yes.
Next is ordinances, O 2050, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for the purchase of an underground utility installation services for the Justice Building. First reading.
May we spend the readings?
Second.
Got a motion to spend all readings. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn? Councilmember Ginn? Ginn? Height?
Yes.
Councilmember Ginn, can you hear me?
Our screen looks like it's frozen.
It does. Is there anything?
Yeah, she's having some internet problems, so it's okay. We'll see.
We'll just go ahead.
A pass, yeah. All right, how about a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor. Oh, sorry, on the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn? Height?
There she is. There she is. She's back. Yes, for me.
Okay, um, do you want me to go ahead and go to the emergency, or try, okay. On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Our screen's frozen again.
Ginn? Okay, Height?
Yes.
Okay. O 2051, Councilmember Height?
Please call it, and before, uh, you read it, uh, Mayor, with your permission and without objection, I'd like to add, uh, council, uh, woman or councilmember Ginn's name as a sponsor to O 2051, please.
Okay, we've got the applicant online, Brad Peterson. If anybody's got any questions, uh, we can go to him. Uh, I won't bring him up unless, uh, it's necessary. So with that, um, let's, let's go forward.
An ordinance granting a waiver of sidewalk requirements of Section 12.21 of the zoning ordinance
and Section 9.11 of the subdivision ordinance for certain real property located at 4,600 and 4,620, West Commercial Drive in the city of North Little Rock. First reading.
Move, we suspend all readings.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Spend all readings. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Pass.
And Height?
Yes.
All right, how about, uh, a motion to adopt?
Motion for adoption.
Give me, Ron Harris, a second. Ms. Ross? Questions?
You know, anytime we want to do sidewalks, because when we're having to go back in, it's such an expense to the city. But can you just kinda explain how this is in a commercial area, and there's no other sidewalks around there, from what I understand?
I can answer that question. Across the street, there's a sidewalk. On the other side of the str- on the other side of the street, there's a sidewalk that runs, uh, from, uh, up, uh, past Taggart down, uh, past in front of Parkstone, uh, all the way, uh, uh, up to the Golden Corral, I believe it is. On the side of the street that we're getting the sidewalk waived, that's the only piece of property that's not already a parking lot that, uh, is, uh, could have a sidewalk put in it. So it would just basically be a sidewalk across one piece of property that goes nowhere, so it'd be a waste of money to put a sidewalk on that side of the street. Can I answer your question?
Yes, there's one on the other side, I saw.
There's a sidewalk across, across the street.
Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Uh, anybody else? On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn is going to be a pass. Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter? Baxter? You're still muted. Baxter, you are still muted. Okay.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Had a little window issue.
Okay. Harris?
Yes.
Ginn? This is gonna be a pass, and Height?
Yes.
O 2052, Councilmembers Height and Ginn?
Please call it.
An ordinance allowing a special use to allow an event center in an I-1 zone for property located at 5301 Warden Road, number H-1 in the city of North Little Rock. First reading.
Move, we waive all readings.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Suspend all readings. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn? Pass, and Height?
Yes.
The, uh-
Motion for adoption. Anybody have any questions?
Have a second. Hold on just a second. Uh, we got, uh, Renita Noble. I think a lot of us remember Renita. She's my dear friend. We share the same birthday. She is, um, uh, former electric company employee for a long time, and, uh, when she does something, she does it first class, so I'm sure this is gonna be a fine venue. So with that question, so Ms. White? Ms. White?
Yes. Um, I have a specific question, and I've, I've already asked it once, but in Section 2, on Number 2, provide security for events serving alcohol, who is that security that they're requ- is required to call? Is this, eh, the police department, or private services, or how does that work?
Sean.
Renita, are you there? We'll get Sean to answer that.
Uh, the way it's written right now would be just a private security company. They could hire the police if they were wanting to when they're off duty, but it, it would be as just a security officer from a private company.
Ms. Ross?
Sean, while you're there, um, is, is that what standard for most of our event centers? That we just, uh, a private security company or a police officer?
For the majority of them, it was, uh, just a private security, uh, for when they serve alcohol. When they don't serve alcohol, they don't have to provide one.
Right, right.
Ms. Ross?
Uh, I think we're working, thinking on the same wavelength there, because I was wanting to make an amendment, and I know that we've done this in the past, when it just says security, to amend a licensed security. Because we've had some events in the past that have had security that was not licensed and were not able to control the crowd. So I'd like to make that amendment to licensed security.
All right, have, do I have a second on that amendment?
I'll, I'll say second.
Okay, uh, we've got a motion and a second to add licensed security instead of just security. Uh, we've got a motion and a second on the amendment.
On the amendment, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor? Taylor?
I'm, I'm thinking. My question is, who in the world is gonna police that, but, um...
Police what? What was the question?
Who's gonna police whether they, whether these security company has a license or not? Who's gonna, who's gonna monitor that and keep up with it?
Well, we don't monitor any of these on a per-event, uh, issue. Uh, if they, if they get caught, of course, then they can have their license suspended or revoked. Ms. Ross?
Uh, I just wanna say this recommendation to say licensed security, that came from the police department at one time back years ago, that we add licensed security to this, you know, if we are requiring security during alcohol, and, uh, like, I don't know how we police that, but I'm sure if there was something that happened, then it would be, it would be up to the owners. We have to respect the fact that hopefully they'll do like they're supposed to.
Yes.
Okay, Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn is going to be a pass. Height?
Yes.
How about a motion to adopt?
I move. Second.
Got a motion and a second. On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn is going to be a pass, and Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn is pass, and Height?
Yes.
Includes new business.
Thank you very much. Uh, I think we've got one public comment. Ms. Whitby, you wanna read that?
Yes, sir. This is an email I received, um, to, let's see, it looks like it came in on Friday the 22nd. It's from Cummins Mayberry. Says, "Good afternoon. Can you please let me know when the playgrounds will reopen and why no one has addressed reopening the playground equipment at the parks? I would like this addressed at the next council meeting, please. The mayor said to email you with questions to add to the meeting agenda. Thanks, Cummins Mayberry."
Thank you very much. Uh, we are, I will answer that comment with, um, with another comment, that our plans are right now to open up the playgrounds on June the 1st. The, our pools, of course, are going to open on June the 5th, I believe, is the date on that. And, um- And we are meeting next week to look up, consider opening the hay center and what kind of protocol to do there. And we are opening up the ball fields with strict guidelines on what the governor said the protocol was gonna be and the directive was gonna be there. And each of the managers that put on these ball fields will agree to it. And we're looking at, I'm making my final decision tomorrow, but I think we're gonna try to open up Funland middle of June. So, hopefully that answers her question and a lot more. So, that's where we're headed. Anybody else got any comments for the night? Mr. Height?
Mayor, I've gotten several questions. When I go to Kroger, I always get these questions. But I've got several constituents that have been asking about reopening the library. My wife asked me about the library. What do we know about reopening the library? I know we've got restrictions on restaurants and bars and...
Right, right now, we're in conversation with the Central Arkansas Library System. And they are not prepared to open. And as of right now, we'll probably follow them or they will follow us. But in our conversations with all the libraries in Central Arkansas, I don't see us opening up anytime soon. Their initial conversation with Crystal was they were looking at August the 1st. I'm thinking that that could change and be moved up sooner than that. But we're monitoring it every day and waiting on some discussion from professionals to allow us an opportunity to open them and be safe. So, it could be, I would say 30 days at least.
For a question of edification, the Little Rock Library booted us out, is that correct? Little Rock Library, but not the Central Arkansas Library System. Is that right?
I think they're all in it together.
They're all, because I thought Little Rock had, back before this all started, Little Rock had done something about that... Anyway, the patrons of the Lehman Library were not gonna be able to use the Little Rock Library. Anyway, but there's a lot of people though that even in a restricted mode, they won't be able to check out books at the North Little Rock Library in both locations, downtown and Lehman Library. And it would, it would be, it'd be exciting to a lot of people up there in Ward 4 if we could expedite that opening from August 1st.
Well, you know, we don't really have control. You and I don't have control over opening up the library. I would suggest, Mr. Height, that you call Crystal tomorrow, our director, and visit with her about it. And then she can give you some professional reasons and so that she can share with your constituents. Anybody else? Ms. Ross?
I'll do that, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted, Central Arkansas Library that's no longer offering three library cards to North Little Rock.
Okay, I heard just part of that, Debbie.